Is anyone here tonight with school board agenda? I'm sorry, but that's not on our agenda this evening. That is school board business. School, school is not on the agenda for this evening in the county community. It's up to the school board to decide. Somehow they sent some bad information out there. Everybody don't realize that tonight it's not on our agenda. Cause it hasn't been brought to us yet. So anybody that's here that really didn't want to be, this is good time to leave. Cause this is going to be a rather long meeting tonight. He said, he called me on the way over. He sounded awful. He said, I'm, I'm going to, he's headed to the planet right now.
You might urge him here.
It's on seventy-two, cool.
Yes, ma'am.
She is?
Yeah.
All right. So you're ready?
I'm ready.
Call this meeting to order as Jefferson County Board of Commissioners' regular quarterly session. Mr. Clerk.
Seventeen members present, four absent.
Seventeen present, four absent. Would y'all please stand for prayer led by our chaplain and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Sam Sloman?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everyone out this evening. Uh, we'd like to thank the youth and adult leadership. Are you here this evening? If any of the leadership programs, please stand up so everybody can recognize you. Thank you guys for coming out. Next, we have proclamations and courtesy resolutions. Grateful Nation Project, you're next, sir.
First of all, we'd like to thank the, uh, county commission for giving us a chance at your regular. County heroes who gave their all for their nation, their state, and their county. Tonight, we have a marine. And to conduct the ceremony, I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Colonel Retired Marine Marcus Reed.
I cannot begin to tell you how honored I am to take part in this ceremony tonight. I'm introducing James A. Jimmy Russell III, Corporal, United States Marine Corps. He was the first battalion twenty-six Marines. He fought right after the Major Tet Offensive and was killed in nineteen sixty-eight. I am so thankful that I have his brother's wife, three nieces, and a sister here with us tonight. Could you please join me up here? One of the things I'd like to say is that month that Jimmy was killed in action, he gave his wife in service of our country. And his family gave so much. And these are Americans that we should honor. And I'm so thankful for the grateful nation project because that project is recognizing hometown heroes from Jefferson County. I have Commissioner Solis and Commissioner Bales here with us. I'd like to get the mayor to come up. Mayor Potts, thank you, sir, for all the effort that you put in to writing the proclamations. We do have a plaque of honor and I'd like for you, if you would, to go ahead and read the proclamation, mayor.
Thank you, Marcus. Honorary proclamation for hometown hero. Whereas James A. Jimmy Russell III was born to parents James II and Hazel McGeorge Russell. On March the thirtieth nineteen forty-seven, they resided in the New Market Community located in Jefferson County, Tennessee. Jimmy Russell was a student at New Market School and Jefferson High School. He was active in multiple sports and was a gifted athlete. At the height of the Vietnam War, Corporal Jimmy Russell was sent to Vietnam and assigned as a rifleman with Company B, First Battalion, Twenty-Sixth Marine Regiment, Third Marine Division, Third Marine Amphibious Force. And in January nineteen sixty-eight, North Vietnamese and Communist Vietcong forces launched an attack against American and South Vietnamese military targets in South Vietnam. The operation was known as the Tet Offensive and because it was launched during the Vietnamese Lunar New Year holiday. And whereas Corporal Jimmy Russell's First Battalion was mobilized on March the twenty-seventh nineteen sixty-eight. As part of Operation Allenbrook, the US Marine Corps compiled a record, a report entitled, US Marines in Vietnam: The Defining Years Nineteen Sixty-Eight. Its authors described the challenges faced, the Twenty-Sixth Marine Regiment. The regiment's orders called for an ongoing search and clear operation for enemy personnel, facilities, supplies, and equipment. The extreme heat with terrain that included man-high elephant grass as well as hostile, uncooperative local population. And frequent encounters with booby traps and mines made the search and clear mission far more challenging than its name implied. On May the twenty-ninth nineteen sixty-eight, Corporal James Jimmy A. Russell III was killed by small arms fire in Queen Name Province, Republic of Vietnam. Lost at age twenty-one, he was posthumously awarded a Purple Heart Medal. Corporal Russell was laid to rest in New Market, Tennessee, and is honored by the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Weston DC and at the East Tennessee Veterans Memorial in Knoxville, Tennessee. Whereas Corporal Jimmy Russell lived a life of service to others and is worthy of special recognition and appreciation for dedicated service. Now therefore, I, Mark Potts, by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of Jefferson County, in conjunction with Jefferson County Commissioners, express our sincere thanks, deepest sympathy, and condolences to the family and friends of late Corporal James Jimmy A. Russell III. He will be remembered for the sacrifice he made to Jefferson County and the United States. I here too have set my hand and caused the seal of Jefferson County to be affixed to this the twenty-first day of October in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-four.
Being a marine, I want to share that during the month that Jimmy was killed, there were two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine US service members killed in action. We had a lot to give their all, fifty-eight thousand, and I appreciate that. It was not any further ado, I believe that you're receiving this. This is the grateful nation honor plaque, Corporal James A. Jimmy Russell III honoring those who gave the last full measure of devotion. Thank you so much.
Next, an oversighter, this happened, uh, recently, Commissioner Reed brought to my attention, Tenth District. If you commissioners want to come up with Barbara Jean Sheets family. This is an honorary resolution, I'll ask her family to come forward this time. At the time when, uh, when she passed, uh, we were not doing this recognition, so out of her service and what she's done for the county, we're, we're going to rectify that tonight for you. So we, we appreciate all of you being here. This is an honorary resolution to commemorate and honor Barbara Jean Sheets for her public service to the citizens of Jefferson County. Whereas Barbara Jean Sheets served the residents of Jefferson County, Tennessee with dedication, integrity, and uncompromising principle. She represented District Ten of the Jefferson County Commission and served diligently for twenty years as an elected official. She served in an ethical and professional manner. Barbara Jean served to promote the well-being advancement of Jefferson County during both difficult and good times. She was a caring, loving person who tried to help anyone in need. Barbara Jean Sheets took great pride in her family. She was loved by her family and friends and lived a life of service to others. She was a very active member of the Martha Davis Baptist Church, serving as a trustee, a Sunday school teacher, and an usher. Barbara Jean Sheets admired and respected, is worthy of special recognition and appreciation for dedicated service. Now therefore be it resolved out of the Board of Commissioners of Jefferson County, Tennessee, we recognize and gratefully acknowledge the exemplary spirit, outstanding leadership, and commitment. Be it resolved that the honorary resolution be presented to the family of Barbara Jean Sheets and it could be spread across the minutes of Jefferson County Commission meeting to be a permanent record of thanks and gratitude to Barbara Jean Sheets. Thank you so much. I guess she served here long enough for them to leave early, right? Twenty years, she's bought them a little time, okay. Next, uh, an honorary resolution is in honor of Terry F. Stanley, if his family will come forward. Terry worked for county commission here, uh, was a well-known figure in, in county offices as custodian and, uh, kept up new, new current affairs on what was going on. So if you need to know what was going on in the county, ask Terry. So we're so glad that y'all could be here with us. Whereas Terry F. Stanley, having served with great affection and dedication to Jefferson County Custodial Department, is worthy of special recognition and appreciation. Terry F. Stanley took great pride in his attention to detail, went above and beyond performing his custodial duties. His strong faith, determination, and belief in God remain positive when faced with many challenges. Terry F. Stanley loved his country and was a proud Vietnam veteran. He loved helping others and was, and felt a stranger was only a friend he had not yet met. Terry Stanley will be remembered for his helpful, caring attitude and friendship and is loved by many friends and family. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Jefferson County, Tennessee recognizes and gratefully acknowledges a dedicated and cherished colleague who worked tirelessly serving Jefferson County. Thanks so much. Next, we're, we'll be honoring James Gordon Pack, so those commissioners from the White Pine District, if you would come forward. And also the family representing Gordon Pack could come forward. Come on, we'll clear a path for you. Honorary resolution, whereas James Gordon Pack served the residents of Jefferson County, Tennessee for many years with dedication, integrity, and uncompromising principles. He was the epitome of the volunteer spirit. James Gordon Pack served as a dedicated Jefferson County Commissioner from January nineteen sixty-eight to August nineteen eighty-two in District Two. He was a pillar of his community. James Gordon Pack not only loved his family, but loved God and demonstrated his true Christian spirit by serving others. He was an active member of the Harvest Outreach Church. James Gordon Pack was a businessman, owning and operating Easy In-Market and Deli for thirty-seven years. He will be remembered for his helpful, caring attitude and friendship. James Gordon Pack saw the need for fire protection in White Pine and was instrumental in forming the volunteer fire department. He served as chief for twenty-eight years with the Pack Fire Hall named in his honor. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Jefferson County, Tennessee recognizes and gratefully acknowledges the exemplary spirit, outstanding leadership, and commitment of Gordon Pack. It's worked in the past. See if it'll work this time. I don't know. I think the jury was out on this one, but we're going to do it anyway. Charles Tipton. Come on up here, Charles, we'll resurface you, no pun intended. By the way, I still got a pothole on my road. Congratulations. An honorary resolution to honor Charles Tipton. Charles H. Tipton with the Jefferson County Highway Department retired on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four after serving forty-eight years with the Highway Department. Charles Tipton has served as a road worker, mechanic, asphalt technician, quarry operator, and shop foreman for a total of twenty-four years. Charles Tipton served as highway superintendent for twenty-four years. Charles Tipton has served the residents of Jefferson County with great dedication, professionalism, and integrity, and treated all with respect and dignity. Charles Tipton is worthy of special recognition, appreciation of all of Jefferson County for the many years of faithful service. Charles Tipton took immense pride in his attention to detail and performing the duties of his office. He served with distinction, will be remembered with appreciation and gratitude. Now therefore be it resolved, Charles H. Tipton will be remembered for his helpful, caring attitude and friendship. He is a respected and cherished colleague who worked tirelessly serving Jefferson County. Congratulations. This next one is for companion animal rescue and education. If, uh, representatives from CARE will come up. This would have been an oversight, other than Sheriff Coffey pointed out that they did a exemplary job, knocked it out of the park with, uh, the recent events that they, uh, had the privilege of attending to. First of all, on a personal note, thank you for everything you did. I'm sure that was an overwhelming challenge and, and you did good. A lot of people talk, yeah. Mayoral proclamation, whereas companion animal rescue and education, otherwise known as CARE, became a refugee camp when sixty-eight dogs were removed by animal control officers. Whereas volunteers were cleaning cages, walking dogs, providing compassion and caring to these dogs. The goal was to prioritize fostering of these dogs. Cleaning the dogs was top priority and involved many volunteers along with groomers and other people who volunteered. Jefferson County owes a debt of gratitude to CARE. Jefferson County owes a debt of gratitude to CARE and all the nonprofits and businesses and the many volunteers who helped with the CARE, treatment, and relocation of these dogs. Now therefore I, Mark Potts, by virtue of authority vested me as mayor of Jefferson County, express sincere thanks and gratitude to CARE and everyone who helped with this crisis. Thank you so much. Next, we have approval and corrections to the agenda. Does anyone have anything? Not hearing any, we'll move right along to consent of the agenda. Is there a motion? Ms. Hader, please vote. Disapproval, corrections to the agenda is what should be, what should say? Eighteen years, zero, no? Passes. Next, we have election of officers for the county commission. We have chairman, chairman pro temp, chaplain, and parliamentarian. We will start with chairman. The floor is now open for nominations.
I second.
Ms. Brooks.
I nominate Jim Snodgrass.
Anyone else? Motion, close nominations.
Move, nomination cease.
Second.
Nomination cease. We will call the roll, and you say the name of who you want to vote for.
Chairman.
Hold on just a second.
Janet Norton.
Snodgrass.
Joe Coleman.
Carmichael.
Austin Brooks.
Snodgrass.
Paulo.
Carmichael.
Get up, please. Jan Snodgrass.
Snodgrass.
John Johnson.
Carmichael.
Tim Seals.
Carmichael.
Sammy Solomon.
Carmichael.
Rob Evans.
Snodgrass.
Francis Douglas.
Snodgrass.
Randy Bales.
Carmichael.
John L. Scarlett.
Carmichael.
Ronnie Coleman.
Carmichael.
Kimmy Carmichael.
Carmichael.
A.J. Walker.
Carmichael.
Marcus Reed.
Carmichael.
Heidi Thomas.
Carmichael.
Twelve to six. I guess I'm still chairman. Next, we have chairman pro temp. The floor is now open for nominations. Ms. Katie.
I nominate Sammy Solomon.
We have a nomination for Sammy Solomon.
Second.
We have second. Anyone else? Motion cease.
Move, nomination cease, reelected by acclamation.
Does anyone have a problem? Not hearing any. Next, second.
Second, second.
Next, we have chaplain.
Nominate Joe Coleman.
Second.
We will accept the acclamation. Next, we have parliamentarian. The floor is now open. Ms. Katie.
I nominate John L. Scarlett.
Second.
Motion on the floor, and second, Ms. Brooks.
Nominate the county attorney.
Second. Okay, the roll will be called, and you will be voting for John L. Scarlett. The county attorney. Katie Hefei.
John L. Scarlett.
Janet Norton.
John L.
Joe Coleman.
John L.
Austin Brooks.
County attorney.
Paulo.
Scarlett.
Jim Snodgrass.
Scarlett.
John Johnson.
Scarlett.
Tim Seals.
Scarlett.
Sammy Solomon.
Scarlett.
Rob Evans. The county attorney. Francis Douglas.
County attorney.
Randy Bales.
Scarlett.
John L. Scarlett.
Stain.
Ronnie Coleman.
Scarlett.
Kimmy Carmichael.
Scarlett.
A.J. Walker.
Scarlett.
Marcus Reed.
County attorney.
Heidi Thomas.
Scarlett.
Thirty-four, one extension. Mrs. Scarlett remains parliamentarian. Next, we'll move to approval of minutes. You have a regularly quarterly session of Jefferson County Board of Commissioners scheduled July 15, and you also have a board. Do you want to take them together or separate? Take them together.
You voted, yeah. Yeah, he voted, fair enough.
Eighteen to zero, pass. Next, on the agenda, we have appearance of citizens. So we've got a pretty good little stack right here, so if y'all would please work with us and try to convince as much as you can, you'll come to the podium. You have three minutes to speak. Pick up a little bit, will you? Can you hear me now? Turn it up. Now, we will have appearance of citizens. When you come to speak, you will come to that podium, speak into the microphone, hopefully everybody can hear you. Our first speaker will be Kathleen Villers. Please state your name and your address.
Kathleen Villers, 2202 Arrowhead Drive, Dandridge, speaking about short-term rentals and the wheel tax. Short-term rentals could be an excellent revenue source going forward for the county. Although it's not on tonight's agenda, it will likely come before this commission in January 2025. I did work with Jim Fox to develop some short-term rental revenue projections based off of detailed spreadsheets. These show annual net revenues of 2.7 million for a low range of net revenues, 4.1 for a mid-range, and 6 point million for a high range. The net annual revenues is a maximum of about 250K to manage this particular revenue stream. But a new source of revenue such as short-term rentals isn't going to just happen instantly. It will likely take, as any good revenue program, a while to fully ramp up, potentially two to three years. Where will the revenues come from in this interim two to three years? I segue now to the $25 wheel tax that is being considered tonight, and I also reference a recent graphic that I emailed to all of you last week. I did provide a few hard copies when I heard that there were a couple of people that could not open the PDF. The continuance of the $25 wheel tax for a total of $50 for several years provides a bridge until the short-term rental revenues would ramp up. If the $25 wheel tax is not approved, this would cut incoming revenues by approximately 1.2 million. Add that 1.2 million to another $1.5 million revenue shortfall that Commissioner Carmichael commented on at a prior meeting. So the 1.2 million, 1.5 million, that totals $2.7 million of where are we going to get the revenues? And what I fear and what I would think most commissioners would not want to do is to go back to property tax owners to ask for another property tax increase to cover 2.7 million. For roughly $247,000, that would mean an additional penny or a total of another 11 cents added to the property tax rate, taking for property tax owners the current 1.43 rate up to a 1.54 rate. That's another 7.7% increase. So please, what I would ask is consider the continuance of the $25 wheel tax for a total of $50 for an interim period of time. And why? Because that would provide, as the graphic did show, a more level revenue stream and lessen the likelihood of having to get replacement revenues from property tax owners. Finally, another reason to approve and consider the $25 wheel tax is county debt, which as of January 2024 was $54.5 million for the county. That would be consisting of the principal plus interest scheduled to be paid off in the year 2040. The county's annual outlay to make those debt payments is roughly $3.2 million a year. Keeping the $25 wheel tax for an interim would be prudent and bring in about 1.2 million to help pay for that each year. Thank you.
And thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Bruce Kent.
My name is Bruce Kent, 928 Babo Drive, and I'm here to talk about the property taxes. The number that was given at this meeting was off 300% when I got my bill. My property tax went up 18%, and I don't live on the lake, I don't have a big house. And then you guys are trying to sneak in at the last meeting the wheel tax, which would be a 35% increase in taxes. Now, from experience, Nancy Pelosi, Kamala Harris, Gavin Newsom have never raised taxes on their citizens at the rate that you guys are. You're all supposed to be Republicans. I suggest you start acting like Republicans and not Democrats. Someone's got to be the adult in the room and stop the spending. When I was here at the last meeting, no one wanted to take a cut in their departments. Too bad. I've been in businesses where we had to let people go. But someone's got to stand up for the citizens because the bill, those tax, they'll keep going up and up and up because I've been there before, and you guys are the only ones that can stop it. Thank you.
James Nolan.
James Nolan, 714 McGuire Road, New Market, Tennessee. I'm not in favor of the wheel tax, privileged tax, whatever you want to call it now. They're trying to sell down the drain to the people of this county. But you have gotten the property taxes raised now. You've got homes that went in on this place here in this county, several hundred, and you've got property tax coming in off all them. And if in event you do raise the wheel tax, I think it should go mostly for the sheriff department and deputies and stuff because you guys were pretty disrespectful last week to the sheriff. That's all I got to say. Open your minds up and respect the people.
Thank you, sir. Next, Reverend Chris Mase. Please hold your applause.
Chris Mase, 1081 McGuire Road, here to say we need to support our local sheriff's office when he asked for the increase. And I'm against this wheel tax or privileged tax, whatever you want to call it, unless we can cut this wasted spending out that's been going on. You know, and if you're bound to put this in, let's put some of it towards the sheriff's department where it's needed at. He's losing people. He's understaffed. You know, these other departments has kind of dropped the ball. I don't want to go naming names, but you know, they lost a permit, let it get expired. Y'all are handing money to him. Things don't seem right, people. You need to hold him accountable for what he done, let alone with the new truck he got, you know. So we need to cut the wasted spending out.
Thanks, sir. Next, we have Bill Villers.
I'm Bill Villers. I reside at 2202 Arrowhead Drive. Subject is Jefferson County land use management. Many residents believe that the land use management process is broken and that officials help builders but fail to consider detrimental consequences to residents in the county. Some observations: Industry, commercial, residential, farming, and other land uses are not following a plan. Throwing darts at a Jefferson County map to set disparate building zones won't end well for the county. Residents and senior county officials burn a lot of time and energy to stop harmful disparate building zone changes. The county is not broadly planned to be business-friendly, and therefore county revenue is heavily reliant on property tax increases. 6,000 acres of agricultural land, about 7% of what we have left, has been lost in the last 10 years. It was converted to other uses, though 91% of residents want to maintain the county's rural field. Agricultural permitted sheds bypass many codes yet are quickly being converted to residents in A1 and we're hearing recent comments from the builder as they still plan to use them for camps, even though camps are not allowed in A1. Blatant county and state code violations are not being enforced timely. The key purpose of government jurisdiction is to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of its residents by properly planning for future growth and development. A land use plan with resident buy-in is critical for Jefferson County to evolve in a safe, efficient, low-tax-cost, and harmonious way. The gaps in our land use and construction management are complex, lack of funding in some cases, planning. Lack of funding in some cases, planning, resources, and processes. Key gaps that will cover an unexpired, high-quality, forward-looking, zone-aligned, vision-aligned land use plan supported by residents is a key gap, the biggest one. Tight zone definitions, codes, enforcement, and robust penalties for violators is another gap. Zoning had cross-training and replacement in nine to ten months when Tim is planning to retire is a gap. An effective county enforcement officer, which I've been told does not exist for the county. BCA, PC roles and processes are not being best practice. A quality land use plan should show where future revenue growth will come from. The plan would show locations of various zones for future revenue, utility, emergency service efficiency, jobs, and preserve or improve resident satisfaction. A better plan would also help BCA and PC to function better, obviating the need for much resident involvement. To obtain the broad specialized skills needed, we urge the commission to contract with Catherine Baldwin and external contractors with a proven track record for quality land use plan development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bill. Next, we have Ashley Mew. Ashley Mew. Next, we have Beth Nelson.
Beth Nelson, four-seventy Judson Road, Strawberry Plains. I'm here to speak about the mineral tax resolution and why should we consider this tax. First, I want to point out the county's financial position, and I'm honestly really concerned about our finances for our county. Our schools are not adequately maintained. At the recent school board meeting, I became aware that in two thousand nineteen, millions of dollars in needed repairs were reported to the school board, and you all paid for the facility study to be done. Yet, five years later, many of those repairs are still not done. And everyone is aware, of course, about the deplorable conditions at Jefferson Elementary School. County employees are not being adequately paid. I don't know what's going on in the sheriff's department, but something has happened there. I don't know what the fix is, but when you have two officers dispatched to wipe pine for a domestic dispute, and there's one officer to cover the rest of the county, there's something wrong. There's something wrong. Many Jefferson Countyans work in other surrounding counties as teachers and law enforcement officers so they can make adequate pay, including some of you. In last month's meeting, the chairman of the budget committee said to expect at least a one point five million-dollar shortfall for the upcoming year. If the shortfall is one point five million, then what is it the year after? What is it the year after that? In short, the county has inadequate revenue to meet its operating expenses. Those expenses will be going up, they're not going to go down. The county's property tax base has not been growing sufficiently to meet rising expenses. I would also say that businesses don't want to come to our county. And you talk to regional planning and you talk to the planner. They don't want to come to our county because we don't have adequate protection for businesses to come in the county. They want to know if they come in here, what's going to be next to them. How do you invest? Businesses invest without knowing what's going to be next to them. Our zoning needs overhauled. So, we have only one way to pay for increasing expenses, increase the property tax rates. We just raised it, and we will have to raise it again this year and then another time. We all just had a raise, it'll have to go up again and again, unless we find other sources. So what are those other sources? It seems to me that this severance tax is a possible other source. We're one out of six counties in eastern Tennessee that do not impose the mineral tax. So, let's consider the arguments we keep hearing against a severance tax. Operators are providing jobs and should not be taxed. Operators will cease doing business and go away, leaving workers without jobs. My counterarguments are, operators are in all other counties except six. Many of those counties don't even have mining. So, they're still in business, they didn't lock up and go away, they didn't close, and they've not gone away. Operators will look at the severance tax as a cost of doing business. Every business has a business cost of doing business, this is just one of them for the mining industry. Jefferson County has valuable by-product mineral resources. Let's not give them away, instead, let operators pay for them. In summary, opposing this tax will help reduce future property tax increases. Let businesses operating for a profit bear some of the tax burden instead of the county residents. I don't think any citizen in our county desires another tax increase. I think the county commission's job is to fund our county. And so my question is, are you doing everything you can to fund our county? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim Fox.
Good evening. My name is Jim Fox, I live at nineteen oh nine Abilene Trail in Dandridge. First of all, wow, what a packed house we have. I hope you guys have placed your order at Starbucks for your coffee later. And in fact, I'll be glad to go by and pick it up if need be. There are three hundred and sixty-five days in a year, and yet, the governing body of this county, meaning county commission here, only meets four days a year. What about the business for the other three hundred and sixty-one? I understand your packet for this meeting has over three hundred pages in it. Yeah, I would find it amazing if everyone on the commission had time to read it and even digest all of it. And also, given the length of the agenda, in fact, there's fifteen items on new business, just on new business, which is, and about six of them is going to be, have a lot of discussion attached to them. The citizens are only given three minutes, so we have to pick and choose which items we choose to address, even though several others, those other items may be of interest and concern to those citizens. So, my suggestion is, I think we probably need to be meeting more often. I mean, all the other commissions meet on a monthly basis, the zoning, road commission, school board, and et cetera. So why not this governing body, especially with given the agenda that seems to be in a packed house that we have? Everyone in this room, I believe, received their property tax bills this, just last week. I know for mine was over a ten percent increase, another fellow said his was eighteen. You know, we're ringing the alarm bells when our property tax assessments come out in February, and it's, oh, don't worry about it, wait till you see your tax bill, it won't be nearly what it is. So, but here we are, you're asking for a price increase, increase taxes in this session, when everybody just got their property bills last week. That's poor timing at best. A couple of things, again, the wheel tax, that affects everybody that lives in this county. But there was a very large majority of property owners that don't live in this county. So they are cheering for the wheel tax because they won't be paying it. The mineral tax, whether the only county that's not collecting it or one of the few counties not collecting it, do you really think that when the dump truck arrives at the construction site, they're saying, oh, well, we got these supplies from Jefferson County, so you don't have to pay the taxes on it. Oh, well, but this load come from Grand River County, so you have to pay the taxes on that. Now, since everybody's paying it, they've already figured it into their budget. Thank you. I have plenty more, but again, just three minutes.
Richard Janette.
Hi, I'm Richard Janette, live off Wells Springs Road in Dandridge. And I'm here to talk about the Flock camera system that's being discussed. And I just wanted to ask the commission and let the commission know that, first of all, I'm a huge supporter of local law enforcement, and Sheriff Coffee especially, we've met before. But, I have concerns about the Flock camera system, and I want you guys to inquire and take it seriously as well. I have serious concerns about privacy, information sharing with what agencies, federal, state, local. Of course, my biggest concern would be with federal agencies, warrantless collection of private information. How far will, how far will all of this surveillance be allowed to go? Whether it's facial recognition, drones, different things, you know, where is this leading? I think if you look at a lot of other countries, you know, Ireland, Scotland, England, you can see where it's headed. But, I just want you all to think about these things as we start down this road with the Flock camera system, which is right now just license plates. Are these cameras really needed? Are there other things in place that are sufficient, or do we need to go down this road? If we do decide to approve the Flock camera system, I hope you all put significant safeguards and safety rails in place in any contract to safeguard your constituents' privacies. I do not trust the current leadership in our three-letter, three-letter federal law enforcement agencies. I hope you all will research this topic thoroughly from both sides, because there are good things with it as well, before voting on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have James Lance.
Good evening, Jefferson County Commissioners. My name is James Lance. I'm a twenty-seven-year veteran of the US Armed Forces residing at twenty-two forty-six Peninsula Drive, Jefferson City, Tennessee. I'm here on behalf of the citizens of Dogwood Acres. As the late great Sir Winston Churchill stated, "He who fails to plan is planning to fail." To this end, our community was pleased to learn the county commissioners have embarked on the development of a substantive strategic plan. We respectfully request this plan incorporates specific, measurable, and achievable milestones with regard to, one, clearly articulating the overall vision and milestones for Jefferson County from now through two thousand twenty-nine. Two, incorporating new sources of operating revenue for the county. Specifically, as discussed during last week's county commissioners' meeting and then earlier tonight, A, reinstating the wheel tax, at least for a short period of time. B, implementing a short-term rental revenue tax. C, implementing a mineral severance tax. And as our county mayor mentioned last week, implementing a property transfer tax. These initiatives alone could generate millions of dollars in operating revenue for the county. Point number three, establishing fiscally responsible goals to ensure the county is able to operate within its current and projected fiscal budgets for the next five years. This concern was raised due to a statement made early in the county's current fiscal year, specifically on fifteen July twenty-four regarding a projected one point five million-dollar shortfall. Incorporating these new revenue streams will offset the county's reliance on property taxes as the primary source of operating revenue. As a concern, and with fifteen years' strategic planning experience, I stand ready to assist our county commissioners with developing our strategic plan at no cost to the county. I'd like to close tonight with one of my favorite passages from the Bible to reinforce my strategic planning message. Proverbs twenty-nine eighteen tells us, "Where there is no vision, the people perish." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last but not least, we have Michelle Janette.
Good evening, Michelle Janette, live off Wells Springs Road, talk about the flocks. The Fourth Amendment guarantees our right to be secure against unreasonable searches and seizures or without a warrant. The right for Americans to be secure in their privacy has slowly been eroded, especially since the Patriot Act was instituted after nine eleven. It has become increasingly difficult and almost impossible for a person to keep their privacy intact. Granted, we have freely given up much of our privacy to the welcoming arms of big tech and social media giants and to the glee of the ever-increasing surveillance state. We find ourselves in quite a quandary because technology does have great benefits for law enforcement, especially when it makes things much easier to find criminals. Americans can fully understand benefits like this, but at what cost do we embrace this surveillance? And where do we draw the line on keeping our freedoms and privacy? Thomas Jefferson warned against the dangers of consolidating power and was concerned that such centralization would erode state rights and lead to widespread corruption. Unfortunately, his fears have come to pass with the weaponization of our current federal government against its own citizens. Did you know that a report released last year showed that the FBI conducted roughly three point four million warrantless searches on Americans in two thousand twenty-one, all under the guise of safety? That is quite alarming. So what does this have to do with the Flock cameras? The ACLU wrote an article about their concerns of Flock cameras. In it, they say, "Flock allows private camera owners to create their own hot lists that will generate alarms when listed plates are spotted, but also runs all plates against state police watch lists and FBI primary criminal databases." Flock cameras are already used in two thousand cities, and its goal is to expand to every city in the United States. Flock is building a giant camera network that records people's comings and goings across the nation and then makes that data available for search by any of its law enforcement customers. And every new customer that buys and installs the camera, company's cameras, extends Flock network, contributing to the creation of a centralized mass surveillance system of Orwellian scope. The ACLU says three most important areas for regulation and negotiation are how, how long the data is retained, who the data is shared with, and how that data is used by law enforcement. If a city does choose to use Flock, they suggest contracts with Flock include language that will limit the time the data is stored from a few minutes to a few hours. It will allow only law, local, or state law enforcement access to the data and only with proper warrants or investigative purposes. I humbly offer you this reminder. You are our elected officials, and your job as local commissioners is to protect your voters from big government intrusion. I sincerely ask that you carefully consider the power you are handing over to a surveillance state that is already run amok with tyranny, censorship, privacy intrusion, and data collection, and the targeting of anyone who thinks out of line with the current regime. In closing, founding father James Madison said, "It will not be denied that power is of an encroaching nature" and that it ought to be effectually restrained from passing the limits assigned to it. We have the responsibility to our kids and grandkids to leave them with a better world. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizen input for this evening. We will move on to approval of notaries and bonds. I believe you have four more to be had, sir.
Without objection, I'd like to add the names of Amanda Wheeler, Chancey Russell, Sandra Sparks, Corbin Green.
So moved. Motion on the floor, second. Y'all hear the questions in the comment, proceed to vote.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Seale said you're fixing to hang hogs in here. His blood's thin, he's getting coughed.
Get ready, Seale's getting a little frosty up here.
Mr. Seale said he's going to hang hogs, he's killing.
We have eighteen yes, six go no. Next, we have the nominating committee, Mr. Randy Bales, what do you have for us?
On the, we have several positions that need to be filled, I'll go through them pretty quick. Agricultural Extension Committee needed a farm man.
In the microphone, sir.
I can, I just did. Agricultural Extension Committee needed a farm man, we nominated Aaron Loy. I don't know if you want to vote on these individually or...
Give them up.
Okay. Farm man, Aaron Loy, and then we go to the Facilities Committee, we needed five for it.
Right, you're reappointing people to their other terms.
Jim Snodgrass.
Jim Snodgrass, Terry Dockery, and Heather Martin.
Okay. Okay. So for the Agricultural Extension Committee, we have Jim Snodgrass for another term, Terry Dockery for another term, farm man Aaron Loy as a new person on there, and Heather Martin as a second term also. Can we go ahead and vote on that one and get it out of the way and then tie the rest together?
Sure.
Question or comment?
Terry Dockery's not on UT Extension. I am.
He is correct.
I just got what's... You're on the...
He is correct. In the words of Doc Ollard, dude.
Well...
This is your second term. This is your second. You should replace Terry Dockery with Austin Brooks. During his second term.
So anyway, we'll leave it like it is and add Aaron Loy to the agricultural. If we can vote on that, I'd be happy. Yes, that has you on it, sir. My notes were incorrect.
I think it's Ms. Lee.
He furnished the paperwork.
18 yes, 10 no. Carry on, sir.
So let's get to the Facilities Committee. Nominated from the nominate committee was Jim Snodgrass, Katie Huffaker, Austin Brooks, Greg Bird, and myself. And if we want to do all these together, I'll be glad to do it that way. Finance Committee, we had Katie Huffaker, Janet Norton, Marcus Reed, and John Johnson. On the Personnel, we had John Johnson, Janet Norton, Jimmy Dale Patterson, Ronnie Coleman, and Heidi Thomas. And on the Public Service Committee, we had Katie Huffaker, Janet Norton, A.J. Walker, Sammy Solomon, and myself. That's all that we have. If you want to vote on all that together.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. Whoop. Mr. Blevins.
In no way offensive to permission to a first issue, but several to the committee together, it just doesn't seem to spread it out. It doesn't make sense on its own. In no way I have else. The idea is to have it spread across the county.
Talking to your microphone.
It just seems odd to have two people from the same district on two different committees rather than spread it out. And I know it's hard to fill committees, I get it. You just see what I'm saying. It's two people from the same district, so it kind of... It works against the reason we alternate committees and rotate off.
Anyone else? Mr. Blevins, are you saying you want to nominate someone else or...
No, I'm just saying, you can't put two people from the same... You can, but it just looks odd. It's not a good move. It's just not. So I don't know how we rectify that if we put it all together and vote it through. It all goes through. So how do we... I don't know how to fix that. Last week, it wasn't time to bring it up.
If you're requesting that we separate those, that's fine with me.
Yes, please. Just those two. I don't know how we don't do that. Otherwise, it goes through.
Okay. Mr. Blevins requested we separate those out. Can we vote on those individually?
I believe we can do that.
Or do we need a motion to do that?
This is your second here to get figured out. You're wanting to vote on the agriculture? This is your...
Whatever Mr. Blevins is wanting to do.
What is it, Ron? The extension?
Whatever Janet and... Are both on finance and public service. Finance is more or less the one I'm worried about, man. It just doesn't look right.
Okay, so you're saying you want to vote the finance board separate, what I'm just saying. We'll make sure we clarify this.
You gotta have somebody to fill the spot.
Mr. Blevins, is it the finance department that you want to separate?
Yes. I guess it doesn't matter, one or the other.
Okay. Katie, you're out of speed.
Okay. I had sent a request that I would like to be on finance and public service. If you break it out, I would... My personal wish would be somebody else could go on facilities in my place. And if... I know we're not on facilities together, but I would like to stay on finance and public service. If you're going to take me off something, I've been on facilities for a while. I'm only letting you know in advance because that's the first one we're voting on.
Okay, so here's what we do. Or you want to go ahead and vote on this, then you can come back. Okay, we've got finance committee keyed up.
We've got the nominating committee recommendation.
Currently, on the finance committee, we have nominations of Jim Snodgrass, Katie Huffaker, Austin Brooks, Greg Bird, and myself.
Facilities.
Shit.
Facilities.
I apologize. I grew up on a farm, so there you go. So we're doing the finance and the public services, the two that we're going to read today. So on the finance committee, we have Katie Huffaker, Janet Norton, Marcus Reed, and John Johnson. If we decide we want to take one of those off, we need another motion for somebody else to be put on there, correct?
Nomination.
Or nomination, I'm sorry.
If it's a recommendation from the nominating committee, I would rather take it, and if it fails, then they can take it apart.
That's our recommendation.
Shouldn't it go back to the nominating committee?
No, you can nominate anybody you want to. If it fails...
I just don't think two people in the same issue can do the same board. That shouldn't ever happen. Why would that happen?
You can vote your motion or you can make a nomination. One of the two. That's an easy fix. Vote the motion or make a nomination.
That's why at the very first, I asked for a nomination, but we'll vote the motion as it's stated from the nominating committee.
Well, would someone like to serve on the board? I mean, that's why I said send it back to the nominating committee, unless someone wants to do it from the floor here, which is fine.
Hold on just a second, Mr. Blevins. We are having a motion on the floor. It's going to be passed. It's going to be voted on right now. Proceed to vote. 16 yes, 10 no, passes. Next, Mr. Bels.
Public service nominations of five commissioners would be Katie Huffaker, Janet Norton, A.J. Walker, Sammy Solomon, and myself, coming from the nominate committee.
Question or comment? Proceed to vote. 16 two, passes full majority.
So now I'm assuming we still have two that we have to vote on?
Yes.
So the Facilities Committee, we have Jim Snodgrass, Katie Huffaker, Austin Brooks, Greg Bird, and myself, coming from the nominate committee. And we can also do the personnel unless there's an objection to that, combine those two.
Question or comment? Be fine.
Personnel Committee, we have John Johnson, Janet Norton, Jimmy Dale Patterson, Ronnie Coleman, and Heidi Thomas, coming from the nominate committee.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. 17 one, passed.
Yeah, you got your egg voted ahead of time. That was your first one.
You got me confused.
Mr. Bels, does this conclude your business?
That concludes my business. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next, we have mayor appointments. Mr. Mayor, do you want to read that or you don't need to?
Let me give you a break. Mayor appointments, E-911 Board, Joe Gibson, Brad Phillips. EMS Board, Ronnie Coleman, Paul Lowe, and Colin McCray. Ethics Committee, Heidi Thomas, Austin Brooks, Joe Coleman, Ransome Douglas. Jefferson Memorial Oversight Board, David Hensley. Sanitation Board, Todd Kesterson. Long Range Plain, Jimmy Carmichael.
Mr. Mayor, is Mr. McCray, is he still able to come to the meetings or...
Yes.
Okay.
No, he just agreed. We had an opening. Can't remember why, but we had an opening and he is... He checked with his superiors in these...
Okay.
Proceed to vote.
I think you need a motion, since that's not coming from a committee. It's just an appointment. You gotta have a motion second.
I'm sorry. It was the second. 16 to two, passes. Mayor, does that conclude the...
The day.
Thanks, sir. Next, we have County Clerk Franker.
I just got the list in your packet of uncollected debt. It's checks that were returned by the bank that aged over 10 years. They've taken out. No success with that. Per order request, I can get those off our books. It's a sum of about $300, I think. We'll pay it on the per fee and get it through our books.
Mr. Joe. Thanks, sir. 18 zero, passes. Next on our agenda, we have Budget Committee, Budget Amendments County, Mr. Scarlett.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Scarlett.
Yes.
I don't know the appropriate time. That's why I interrupted. So apologize for the interruption. Something that came up in Budget Committee was the plan from the sheriff to move some funding. It failed in committee, but I would like to bring it back up. So do you want to do that after the...
New business.
New business?
That will be under new business.
If you want to bring it up.
I do want to bring it up. Okay, thank you.
All right. Budget Committee, First Budget Amendment is one-on-one. Budget Amendment Three, you have 37 items on there. There is significant use of fund balance, but the majority of it is to replace the ambulances. That was involved in a wreck. The insurance paid off, but we do have to replace the ambulance. We also have changed in... I don't see Mr. Brad, but we have... The ambulances were not available from Chevrolet, and for $24,000, we can cut off significant amount of time.
Back to phone, Mr. Scarlett.
All right. Significant amount of time on doing that, but you have 37 items. Fund use balance of $380,214. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Mr. Reeves?
I have a question. Before we get started on this, can you tell us what we ended up at the end of the year? How far in the hole we actually were?
Our current unassigned fund balance is that what you're asking for? I gave rollover last week. Is that... Or is that what you're asking for? Our current unassigned fund balance is $6.1 million.
So what are we at? We're at $45 million in that week. That is because we're in the whole...
That is because we used a combination of reserves that we replaced. We pulled out $500,000 of the ambulances, and I believe we used a combination of fund balance budget. So that doesn't have anything with our current unassigned fund balance.
But we still have 6 million plus in the fund balance.
As of right now, we do. If this passes, we'll have about $5.8 million.
I have .8 million, okay. Thank you.
This is using $380,000.
Thank you.
Question or comment before we vote? Proceed. 18 yes, 10 no's. Proceed, sir.
Second one. Dealing with the opioid reserves and also a Jefferson County Chamber of Commerce request to help fund the youth leadership program up to $5,000. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. 17 yes, one no, passes, sir.
This is Tennessee Opioid Abatement Fund 121, Amendment One, moving the money around and also the distribution of it. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. 18 yes, 10 no, sir.
ARPA grant, Fund 127, Amendment One, moving back out of reserves to pull back in. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. 18 yes, 10 no, proceed.
Highway Fund 131, Amendment One. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. 18 yes, 10 no, sir.
Capital Funds 171, Amendment Two, Sheriff's Department, security grants, health department upgrades, and also the funding on the ambulances. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. 18 zero, sir.
Landfield 207, Amendment Number One, operation in landfill for required construction, engineering work for closure, approved by sanitation board. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Proceed to vote. Sir, 18 zero.
Fund 141, Jefferson County Schools, Budget Amendment Number One, moving reserves of $7 million total, items one through 15. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed. Mr. Randy?
Yeah, sorry about that.
18 zero, sir.
141, Amendment Two, unassigned fund balance, $75,000 for architects, scope of work contract, Jefferson Elementary. Unassigned fund balance, seventy-five thousand dollars for architect's scope of work contract, Jefferson Elementary. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question, comment? Proceed to vote. Seventeen one.
One-forty-one, General Purpose Funds, Amendment three. Remove, using seven hundred thousand dollars reserve balance, so move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question, comment? Not hearing any, proceed to vote. Eighteen zero, sir.
Amendment one-forty-one, Budget Amendment number four. This is unassigned fund balance approved by the school board with one million going to additional to Talbot and two million going to Jefferson County Elementary. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question, comment? Proceed to vote. Eighteen zero, sir.
Jefferson County Schools, one-forty-two, Federal Fund, Budget Amendment number one. Items one through three, so move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question, comment? Proceed to vote. Eighteen zero, sir.
Federal Funds, one-forty-two, Budget Amendment two. Revenue, textbook, electronic, and bound. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question, comment? Proceed to vote.
One-forty-three, or one-forty-two, Amendment three, excuse me. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question, comment? Proceed to vote.
One-seventy-seven. School Capital Projects, Budget Amendment number one. Using reserves of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand. You see the other side of the transfers in from, for Talbot Elementary. And renovations and Piedmont. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question, comment? Not hearing any, proceed to vote.
One-seventy-seven, School Projects, Budget Amendment number two. Two hundred thousand. Transfers from one-forty-one to one-seventy-seven, Capital Projects. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question, comment? Not hearing any, proceed. Last one?
One-seventy-seven, Budget Amendment number three. Talbot Elementary, so move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question, comment? Proceed to vote. Sir.
One other thing. Recently, in a paper, one of the citizens said this commission and Budget Committee was not doing her job. Hadn't been doing her job. In fact, I think he, he alluded to that the hayseeds were in charge. So I need to, I just need to give you a snapshot of what the hayseeds have done. Since two thousand and twelve, or thirteen, when the debt maxed out. The hayseeds have paid twenty-five million, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars in cash money in infrastructure improvements in the county. Cash money. They've also paid down thirty-seven million, seventy-seven thousand, thirty-seven dollars. A forty-three percent reduction in debt. At that point in time, when the hayseed started, they were two and a half million dollars from paying their bond payment that year. They had fifty-two thousand dollars in fund balance. You heard Ms. Jesse say there's six now, six million. Those same hayseeds have reduced the county debt by forty-three percent. They went eight budgets with a nickel tax increase. So just to let you know, if the hayseeds were in charge, it appears that they've paid sixty, that is a total of total cash paid with debt off and infrastructure improvements in cash money of sixty-two million, three hundred fifty-four thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is interlocal cooperative purchasing agreements. Question, comment? Proceed to vote. Eighteen zero, next we have the Law Library Fund, cease to Thompson Reuters contract.
So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, I think we've got a discrepancy here. Do we need to vote on the budget parameters and calendar?
No, information only.
It's for information only?
The Budget Committee's already voted on that.
Okay, we got it cleared up.
In the Law Library, we're paying.
Fourteen thousand dollars a year.
And we.
This contract, and we can go down to about two hundred dollars a year if we cease the funding for this contract and continue with this repetitive office for that.
Joe, would you, sir?
Just looking at the. Looking at the budget assumptions. Is increase for next year.
Or?
I mean, this should be in an expel spreadsheet and punch these, punch the button in. Somebody's got to have a number.
I'm not sure for what, though, there's several factors.
For these budget assumptions.
Like, I just received this last week, sir. This is what the Budget Committee approved.
Did you have a number, John Neal?
What, what particular one are you asking?
Oh, eight percent increase in property cash? Anybody?
Yeah.
Five, five percent?
That is an estimate. These, these estimates and assumptions are based on what they've been contacted that are probably the five percent health insurance.
I'm just asking, do you have a total number of what that impact might be at this point?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay.
We're just starting.
That's it.
We're just starting, that's the, that's what we're going to plug, these are the factors we're going to plug in. We're not plugging them in yet, if that's what you're asking.
And they're very, it's a variable thing. I base it off of estimate and actuals. I don't get the insurance increase until about May. So right now, I just have to shoot estimate, it's a guess, that's all it is. Educated guess. At this point, we're in October, I don't really receive information until January and February from the state of Tennessee based off of our health insurance increase until at least March or April or May.
Basically, this is going to be what we're, what we've told Ms. Jesse to start with, to try to make, to start building the budget. Once she gets some firmer numbers and once we start down the budget, we may adjust those. But we're just trying to get a, what it would look like based on those assumptions.
Mrs. Marcus, you're good. All right, just finish up voting, Mr. Joe, Mr. Jim. Eighteen yes, zero no's. That passes. Okay, next we have Personnel Committee. We're going to take a short ten-minute recess. Restroom break, let's get it over with, get back and pitch up.
I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Next order of business is the Personnel Committee hiring a Veterans Services Officer. We, who's the Chairman of the Personnel Committee? That's that lady right there. We got her here.
Who? Me? Okay. I'm not Terry. I'm Leslie Purser. I was part of the committee, as we talked about last week, to do the review and recommended hiring for the Veterans Services Officer. Her name is Marissa King, and she's here with us again tonight. Marissa served as the McMinn County VSO for two years before her husband was transferred here for work and they moved here, and so she applied for the position. She is a combat medic, Sergeant E-5 in the Tennessee National Guard. That's important when you're a Veterans Services Officer because a lot of veterans have issues like post-traumatic stress, diabetes, and there are secondary and tertiary things that go along with those diseases that most of us who have served don't understand. A medic does. So she will be very valuable to our veterans in this county, nearly 4,000 veterans. She has terrific initiative of ways to help. In fact, I had to tell her to slow down a little bit because she hadn't been selected yet, to assist our veterans, as well as she's very intelligent, dedicated, and focused. She received unanimous recommendation by the three veterans who are citizens of this county that did the research, as well as unanimous recommendation by the Personnel Committee. And as a 37-year member of the United States Army, I highly recommend selection of Sergeant Marissa King. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else question or comment? Mr. Bales?
I was on the Personnel Committee, and we had a lot of good applicants. Had a lot of help finding those, going through and sipping through from, I apologize. And both of those stepped up and helped. They held our hand through this because we didn't know what we needed to help the veterans. And they walked us through that, helped us look. They gave us several options. They sent every, it's right here, every resume to us. We looked through them all, and this is the one that we chose, and I just hope we'll support that and vote in favor of her.
Question, comment? Not hearing any, we'll proceed to vote. Passes eighteen zero. Congratulations. That concludes up the old business. There is no old business. So now we are on to new business.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
They got a motion on the floor to suspend the rule. It's our second, and what are you suspending it for?
Two items that failed in Budget Committee last week. I'd like to put on the end of new business. The first item being funding for our Sheriff's Department, and the second being the funding for our libraries.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Where's my second? Got a second right there. Bear with us just a second. Okay, you'll be proceeding. You will be proceeding to vote on, is it, is it the library that you mentioned?
No, you've got to vote on suspension.
We're going to vote on the suspension, but I want to make sure that it's the Sheriff's Department and the library is why we're suspending the rule.
Yes, two proposals that were made in Budget Committee last week.
As written, in Budget Committee.
Yes, sir.
All right. Proceed to vote. We got thirteen yes, five no's. Yes has had it. The rule will be suspended.
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. We've got to have two-thirds.
I thought we just had to have eleven for that.
Two-thirds suspend rule.
You sure? I stand corrected.
Four in print, sir.
I'm sorry, can you hear?
Never mind.
Can we take one of those items?
You can make a motion, Jim.
Another motion to suspend the rule, and the topic would be Sheriff's Department money.
You're going to make another motion to suspend the rule, and the topic will be Sheriff's Department. Question or comment, what you will be voting on, suspending the rule. Mr. Reed?
I have a comment. I cannot believe that we're sitting here while we have the Sheriff's Department deciding to a serious call in this county when the sheriff can't be here to present what he needs to this body. How would you feel as citizens of this county? You need to be concerned because our sheriff has shared with me that he does not have the means that he needs, the deputies that he needs, to take care of this county. That's a very big concern of mine. I keep track of how many law enforcement officers are killed in our country. We have forty-four killed by gunfire as of this date. We have a total of one hundred and fifteen that's given their life in the service to their state, to their country, or to their county. If we are sitting here not willing to find a way to fund the Sheriff's Department like we need to, I cannot believe it. This is totally unsatisfactory. I challenge each commissioner sitting here to look hard into your heart and see if your husband, or your wife, or your son, or your daughter were out facing gunfire. How would you feel about finding a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy thousand that he needs in the order to pay the deputies that put their life on the line here every day? I don't, I don't understand it. I don't get it. It doesn't make sense to me. I think if you refuse to pass this, I sure hope that we don't lose a deputy anytime soon because someone cannot get there and pack them up.
We have deputies under fire right now, just so we're clear.
Okay, just hang on a minute. We can have everybody talking at the same time. Are you finished, Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Brooks, what do you have to add?
Let's vote.
You may call me. Okay, round some votes.
I can't tell you how many times I've went to a call and known nobody else was coming to me, and this is bullshit. Pardon my language, Chairman.
We can't, we can't have that. We can't have that.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's, that's totally out of line.
Okay. No more. Listen, I no longer work for this county. I worked for Knox County. I've been there two months. I left here as a supervisor, and I make $6,000 a year more as a base deputy, and Knox County isn't even the highest paid. I went home many nights with me and two people patrolling this entire county.
Mr. Janet?
I'd like to have some more information before we do anything else with this. I had been given some information recently and started doing some research myself, which I'm not finished with. But what I found was that in the money that we have given over the last year or so has gone heavily to the top part of the departments instead of the bottom, where we need the police officers. Instead of one chief deputy, we now have four, and we're up to eight detectives. So my concern was in how the money was being spent, which I would love to talk to Sheriff Coffey about, and I intend to do that later when he's not detained.
Hold on. Ms. Janet's speaking. Okay, you can, are you done, Ms. Janet? You can speak, sir.
I can speak for the people.
I can speak. In my level of supervision, the last raise we got, I got zero dollars as a sergeant. My guys got brought up, but we were so far behind. It's, it's, it's almost laughable. You can literally go to any department in this county and make five to 10 grand more a year, and we wonder why we can't retain people. It's not good for our officers to be out here by themselves, and it's not fair to the citizens not have people out here to protect them because we can't afford to pay for them.
Anyone else before we move on? Mark Street?
I would like to share with you the authority paid for county agency, twenty-nine, fifty-five thousand dollars a year. Justin City, fifty thousand dollars a year. Maybe that's why I got a thirty-four percent tax increase in Justin City. Forty-seven thousand a year for Danrich, forty-four thousand for the Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Is there a opposing view before we close? Anybody? It's just the extension of the rule. It's just simple, that's what the balcony does. We kind of wandered off the course right here, so we're getting back on. We're voting on the extension of the rule. We got into a conversation here. Proceed to vote. Twelve yes, six no. Fails to make fourteen. Okay, we're back to Ms. Hyde. Sure. Into the microphone, please.
I would, I propose that we suspend the rules to consider the increases for the personnel, for the libraries.
I've got a motion on the floor. We have a second. Question or comment to put the libraries on the agenda? This is to extend the rule. Proceed to vote. We have nine yes, nine no. Fails. So we haven't added anything to the agenda, so we're back to our original agenda. Resolution 2022-15, resolution amending the zoning resolution of Jefferson County by establishing an I-3 zoning district in Jefferson County, Tennessee. Question or comment? All three passed. Proceed to vote when available. Seventeen zero, one extension. Next, we have Resolution 2022-16, resolution amending the zoning resolution of Jefferson County, Tennessee by defining, permitting, and regulating cryptocurrency mining facilities in I-3 zone, District of Jefferson County, Tennessee. Seventeen zero, one extension. C, Resolution 2024-23, resolution meaning, amending the zoning map of Jefferson County, Tennessee by rezoning property from A-1 agriculture, forestry, to C-2 general commercial. Deep Springs Road, Danreach, map zero seven four, a portion of zero one six dash oh four, one acre, by Nicholas and Breckland Sample. Question or comment? Proceed to vote. We need a motion? Seventeen yes, zero no, one extension. Next on the agenda, Resolution 2024-24, surplus resolution, surplus transfer to landfill, nineteen ninety-nine GMC truck. Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. Eighteen zero. E, Resolution 2024-25, resolution Sheriff's Department, flock cameras. Question or comment? I'm not familiar with this resolution. Bear with us just a second, and we'll dig it up. Resolution 2024-25, whereas the use of visual monitoring devices has provided a tool for law enforcement to apprehend suspects and criminals, whereas the monitoring of neighborhoods, thoroughfares has resulted in chapter prosecution, law enforcement able to utilize their resources and time more effectively, whereas State of Tennessee has a program to install. Now therefore be it resolved by Board of Commissioners of Jefferson County. Jefferson County endorses the use of surveillance devices, particularly those produced by flock safety security on state and county roads in the neighborhoods of Jefferson County to enhance the security and protection of all citizens. That would be to support, or to use. Mr. Reed?
I would like to ask, who, who wrote the resolution?
I have not a clue, as it say.
It was sent to me.
Hold on just a second. Doug Green says no.
So you, you were not involved with it?
Not that I know of. I'm not aware of it.
I would make so many citizens raise some legitimate concern. I'd like to know more about it. I'd like to know where the data goes, who saved the data.
Sure. Never know. I have a lot of concerns. Mr. Snoggers?
At this time, I'm adamantly against this. Most, I don't know how much of you guys look into this, but right now, on average, this is an article I read a couple of years ago, we are videoed an average of two-hundred-and-eight times per day. All these banks, these ATMs, everywhere we go. This is nothing but Big Brother stuff. From a law enforcement standpoint, I, I can appreciate the speed of response, but I also know detectives that will go into businesses where situations occur, and they can track a car that, oh, you went by Operation, or Business A here, I saw you Business B down here at this time, and there's so much access already. This is nothing but Big Brother getting deeper into our shorts. It's just nonsense, and it's more money that our state government is going to spend, and they're going to want more money to obtain and maintain it, and services and fees. It's unnecessary, and I'm adamantly against it at this time.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Katie, and then Ms. Janet.
Okay, so I had a constituent call me today who was against this, and the concern was that where's the data stored? So this constituent thinks that the data is stored with Amazon, who is in the country, but a lot of their data goes outside the country. The majority of their data is overseas. And so that was a concern, that the access will not just be limited to the U.S. Also, the concern was that the AI completes the digital print imaging, so if they can't completely read the license plate, then it, AI interprets it, and there might be a misinterpretation. They were concerned about privacy and information sharing. A private company has developed this, and they're hitting small communities, trying to get them to, to purchase it. The question was, do we have issues here that would warrant this technology, or are they just using emotional issues to prey on us so that we would purchase it? Is this system really designed for police use? Because I was told this system was really sold in neighborhoods to begin with, but the ACLU is strongly against. The main concern, though, was can we guarantee the data is stored in the U.S. and is safe? So I would be a no vote.
Ms. Janet? All right, Mr. Ronnie Coleman?
This word of pie, has there been any research to see if those monies could come from the opioid monies?
I think you're asking, can we use opioid money on any of this?
Yes.
State guidelines are pretty specific. It has to be for rehab, recovery, prevention, and treatment in related to opioids, so.
Is it not for drugs also?
No, not necessarily. You have to take that up with your State Guidelines Committee on opioids, or get real creative.
This is a newer system, but I will say, my personal experience, I use this system daily at work. For me to run a tag, I have to have an investigative reason, you have to list it and it is audited. In the last two weeks, I think I've caught probably five people with warrants and recovered over ten stolen cars in Knox County with this system. A lot of the questions I can't answer, but I can tell you it's very useful to us and it is used everywhere around us. The big reason why we all stick with Flock is because it's all integratable, people and I can look at Knox County's cameras, I can look at Sevier's, Sevier County cameras, if, if, if I go to Suzie's house, Johnny beat her up, I can enter Johnny's car into Flock, when he gets, crosses a camera, he's stopped instead of spending four days or five days looking for him, it's a very useful tool for law enforcement.
All right, next we got John Johnson. Microphone, certain.
I said, I believe it's a good tool, and I think it can be a good tool, but until we have more and better information, I will withdraw my second.
All right, thank you, sir, Mr. Bush.
Was anybody else going to second it? Or does it die? Okay. It's a double edged sword, I've probably ran as many tags, if not, than anybody in here, I was a Knoxville city officer for a long time, and we ran a lot of tags, it was a really different world than this to run them.
Microphone, sir.
This is a dangerous slippery slope that you're going down, it's a great tool for law enforcement, problem is, it's not just for them, it's not just who's up for grabs to get it. So maybe we could better spend, how much money is it? To do this, does anybody even know how much it costs?
He currently has $6,000.
Maybe we, maybe we could hire some more deputies instead of some, use the money better right now and do it later, let's look at it six months from now, see, nothing's going to change, we might not have a country in six months, we'll see. But let's not do this now.
Next we have Mr. Scarlett, we'll let Mr. Jim Snoggers close up this thing, Katie does. But Mr. Scarlett?
My question is, about halfway down that page says, whereas Jefferson County has installed visual surveillances from a company called Flock, which has been beneficial, so have we already installed these and what does this resolution actually do?
Sure.
Jefferson City currently has two cameras and I think Bush beans purchased a few cameras for us to use. Sevier County uses them, Knox County, Cock County, and we have access to all their cameras too.
I believe Ms. Janet just got through saying that Danreach has voted to support this. And where's this camera located? I don't think we know much about this, do we? Sammy Solomon, speak. Push the wrong button. All right, well, we're going to proceed to vote with the information we have at this time. We've got thirteen nos and five yeses, it fails. Next, we have F on the agenda, resolution 2024-26, resolution authorizing an additional motor vehicle privilege tax and providing for the disposition of the proceeds thereof. This was in your packet? Is there a motion on the floor? We got a motion, we got a second? Question or comment before we vote? Mr. Brooks?
Mr. Chairman, I see this resolution will be putting, it says, I guess eighty percent of the funds would go towards capital projects and paying off debt, does that mean eighty percent of this goes into the debt service fund? Where does it go?
That it can be directed, Mr. Scarlett, can you elaborate on that?
The, the way this thing is written, five dollars for sure goes to the road department. Other than that, it is written broadly enough, depending on where the county needs it, whether it's debt, whether it's infrastructure, or whether it's capital purchases, I believe, is that not right, Ms. Jessie? And that will be on a year-to-year basis on what this commission deems is where the greatest need is in the county for it. That's the way it's written broadly enough to do that.
During budget.
During budget.
Follow up question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
How much money do we have coming into debt service each year and how much do we have going out?
Changes every year, depends if the wheel tax is approved or not, if you get split in there.
Right, I mean like, right now.
Right now. Currently, our revenue totals 6.2 million and our expenditures total 6.2 million, but that is having a balanced budget, that means that we are projected and estimated to roll $600,000 into our fund balance for debt service.
We have 6.2 going in and 6.2 going out?
Called a balanced budget, so, which means that we're rolling, we're estimating our budget, if you have a copy of your budget, I'll be happy to provide this, shows that we're showing that we are favorable of $600,000 to go into our fund balance for debt service, which is either committed, it will be committed.
So, so we're, we're getting our debts paid?
This year we are.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I will not support this just because I don't see why we're directing more money towards debt at this time, thank you, I rest.
Mr. Reed?
Yes, I'd like to ask, how many pennies from property tax is going into debt service?
This budget cycle, there are nine pennies going into debt service fund 151, which is a total of 2.1 million dollars.
So right now, from property tax, we're putting 2.1 million into the debt service, right?
Currently, this will be your 2425.
So this means we're going to raise that up to another million, or? How much are we going to get from the tax that we're voting on?
Um, well approximately around 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars.
Okay.
This resolution does not say that it is going into our debt service.
Correct.
It states that the budget committee and county commissions get to decide each year where it's going, and if I can just recall, we had to pull plus the one and a half million dollars out of our budget, that can be deemed for capital projects or capital items that we have to buy every year, ambulances are $500,000 a year, that's two ambulances, the sheriff's department vehicles are around 300 to 400,000 dollars, depending on how many we purchase, those items go into our capital fund 171, and so this wheel tax can be deemed for that if we see necessary, instead of using our fund balance in general.
Well, how about, could it be used when we have something like we need to make sure that we have enough deputies to cover us in this county?
Well, that doesn't fall under this resolution, but if we free up funds that are we, we are using for our general fund 101, our fund balance that we're using to pay for those items that we can budget in capital 171, the ambulances, we're using fund balance to pay for them, the sheriff's vehicles, we're using fund balance, if we're able to free that up, that saves us money in our fund balance that we can put towards operating costs or reoccurring such as salary increases or our increased operational costs that are just, we can't stop those, they just happen. So essentially, this can free up some funds that we're using in our general fund 101.
The way this resolution is written, that my understanding is, you can just almost use it for any need there, you may have to move money to do it.
We can always move pennies, that's an option for budget cycle as well, if we have too many pennies going into a certain fund and we don't see that necessary, we can move pennies over to another fund.
And what does a penny bring in?
Uh, 240, 47.
So we could, we could move one penny from the debt service fund into the general fund, we could take care of our sheriff's department and most likely our library, is that not correct?
Good, I'm just keeping in mind that for recurring costs, these are one-time expenses.
I understand that, but pretty soon, we're not going to have anybody patrolling the roads in this county.
Okay, Harrison gets to speak at that time. Next, we have Janet Norton, Janet to a turn. Okay, we'll move along, Katie, I beg your pardon.
Okay, I wasn't on budget the last year, but I think when we balanced the budget, we took out some ambulances and police cars and other things that we've put in there to try to be proactive, we know we have to buy them every year, we tried to spread it out, so we weren't purchasing a bunch at one time. So because we did that, if we started the budget today, we would be behind 1 point X million dollars. So my understanding was intent of this money, you could use to, if you want, if we decided we could use it to, as purchasing ambulances, police cars, but when we balanced that budget last year, we took that out, which puts us at a deficit going into this upcoming year. So if we don't have something to replace that money, all we're doing is catching up and breaking even again. But yes, you can take that money out of different departments' funds where it frees up monies for salaries. Right now, we're just breaking even again though, is that, is my, is, you know, we're, we're not going to start with a balanced budget when we start the budget cycle again because we, the way we balanced it last year. So in my opinion, we need desperately to put the wheel tax in, 99% of the people who have contacted me support the wheel tax, they think it's more fair than property tax increase and they're, they fully support it, so once again, I support the wheel tax, I hope it passes, and if I am misunderstand the budget cycle from last year, Ms. Jessica, would you please correct me, or John Neal, could you please correct me?
Ronnie Coleman?
I'd like to say that property owners in Jefferson County, there's just over 38,000, there's just over 57,000 registered vehicles in Jefferson County, so I ask you what makes more sense?
You rest, Mr. Ronnie. Austin Brooks, then Janet Norton back.
Mr. Chairman, it's me again.
Yeah, I can't spoke yet, but I'm letting you cause you on another.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, who wrote this resolution?
This rose, this resolution was written by six different people, and it passed muster from everybody, from our attorney to the bondsman, do you have a list of it all?
C task, we had the lawyer.
Mr. Drennan can address that.
Mr. Drennan, would you please come to the podium, sir?
To answer your question, initially, I think it was prepared by Mr. Gibson, Scott Gibson, I think it was reviewed, I, I reviewed it, I believe, we also forwarded that to C task as well.
Who's Scott Gibson with?
Mark Manat, I don't know, I, I know Scott, so, that's who drafted it.
Thank you, Mr. Drennan. One more question, Mr. Chairman, this is for Ms. Elder. Which fund, I understand the, the five dollars for the highway department, which fund will this money be directed to?
The highway department or?
No, no, I understand the highway department, so, the remainder.
Will of the commission, it will either be debt service or capital fund 171, whichever is needed.
So it can go into 171 or debt service?
That's how this is written.
Okay, thank you.
Janet Norton?
Katie jarred my memory. And what I was going to say earlier was that I received a lot of feedback after we looked at the, well, I say we looked at it, we didn't even look at it last time, we didn't even talk about it, this last go around, I had a question mark beside that in the Flock cameras, it never even was discussed, but somehow people had seen the agenda, and so I got a lot of phone calls, got a lot of emails, and the property owners were a bit peeved because we had already done the property tax increase, now we're going to do a wheel tax on top of that, we're just going to hit them both, and they said, you know, why would you do both to us, you've already gotten us with the property tax, which they didn't like, and, and I'm in great agreement there, that I wish it had been a wheel tax instead of the other, but that's misunderstanding on my part and I'm, I'm learning as I go, but they asked that we please not hit them twice, so I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Snoggers?
Yep, just clarification, this money can or cannot be directed to operation funding?
Can't be used for reoccurring operational expenses.
But it can be used if it's not reoccurring.
Correct.
So.
For capital purchases, capital infrastructure.
No, I'm just general operating expenses, one-time operating expenses.
No, that's not the way the resolution is written, it's either capital or debt service, capital infrastructure, capital purchase.
Okay, so that's our choice, that's not a requirement by law.
No, that's, that's our, that's the way.
Okay, because I recall that previous meetings, it's been under, I walked out of here thinking that we could only use it for capital spending, period, but we can choose to use it for operational.
Well, like when you're buying ambulances or you're buying deputies' cars, or putting the roof on the courthouse, or?
Remodeling offices, can we use that money for remodeling offices?
Yes.
But the way this is written, we cannot.
Yes, we can, that's capital.
Okay. All right, that's it, thank you.
All righty, we need a second, our second has been withdrawn.
I'll second.
Yep, we got a second. Mr. Scarlett, I believe you can give the close.
I, I got a question and, and I've got a confession to make, because apparently I didn't get the notice of the meeting, must have been about two weeks after we had last time. And, and I'd like to, if you would, Mr. Chairman, I'd like the minutes from that meeting too, because we spoke about eloquently a while ago about transparency, but apparently, some commissioners met and had a press release after our meeting, and I'd just like to, based on this wheel tax, and I, I'd like the, either the notification or public thing of the meeting and/or the minutes of that meeting, please.
I have no information of any meeting between commissioners, my office knows nothing about it.
Well, it was published in a, in the online paper, that it was a press release approved by commissioners, so I'm just wondering when we took a vote on that, because I didn't get to the meeting.
Does anyone else know anything about this meeting? Hold on, hold on. Are you done, Mr. Scarlett?
Yes, I was just questioning.
Okay, Mark, sir?
You know what, again, I'm just amazed by the way that we do things. What we did at the last meeting, I immediately called C task the next day, I asked, I
I asked, I talked to attorney, and what we did was wrong. I put that down, written, you could've read it in the paper. I don't remember meeting with anybody saying, uh, "Are we gonna do this together?" I, I know how strong I feel about a wheel tax. I will tell you what I did, Mr. Scarlett, I have no problem with that. But you know, when we start questioning our commissioners' meeting, I think we better take a look at some of the votes that we make when we appoint people, when we elect people, because I have questions in my mind, so I could throw out some innuendo and some speculation, but that's not the right thing to do. I have no problem telling you where I found out what I did. And I talked to our county attorney, which is my right, and I can share that information. I didn't have to have a meeting to share that information. Thank you.
Mr. Blevins?
Oh, man, I'm sorry.
All right, what Mr. Scarlett's leading with is three county commissioners decided to publicize a letter in the news. I seriously caution, three county commissioners getting together and doing anything publicly that everybody can read. It's called the Open Records Act, that's what it's called. Mr. Blevins, you will hush right now, I have the floor, sir. We're not gonna, we're not gonna play games tonight. Do you want to leave this room? Mr. Blevins, Mr. Blevins needs to leave the room. We're not gonna have unruly conduct in this courtroom, everybody is gonna be respectful of everyone. Anyone else wish to speak before we proceed to vote?
Yes.
You've already spoken, is anyone else that hasn't already spoken?
I don't think I took six minutes on this, Mr. Chairman.
Hang on, hang on, let's speak, nobody else. Now it's time to speak.
I, I, I do not understand how we can sit here and do what has taken place the last meeting when we came up with this and costing me as a commissioner, who I owe my loyalty to the citizens of this county. I don't owe it to anybody on this commission. I don't berate anybody, I don't talk down to anybody. I respect most of the decisions that are made. I can't say that I received that from a lot of people. And then I listened to citizens say how bad some of our representatives on the planning commission, people who provide input to the county. I understand how some have said how bad the sheriff was treated at the budget committee, and here we starting to throw stones at each other, it's time to be professional. I will not support this, I can't support this, it's not right, thank you.
We'll proceed to vote. We have twelve yes, five no's, motion fails for lack of fourteen. Moving along to the next resolution. Mr. Blevins can join the meeting for his mineral tax if he has composed himself in few minutes. Next resolution is twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight, surplus resolution. All right, Wood Library, I'm sorry, I think we got a surplus resolution going, sorry, I'm about to go. Question or comment? Not hearing any, proceed to vote. That's seventeen yes, zero no. Moving along to resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight, surplus resolution, Eric Wood Library. Question or comment? Not hearing any, we'll proceed to vote. Seventeen zero. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash two-nine, surplus resolution, county mayor office. Question or comment?
They're already broke. You have...
Not hearing any, proceed to vote. Seventeen zero. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty, resolution recommending approval of the town of Danridge's request to expand their urban growth boundary in Jefferson County, Tennessee. Question or comment? We have motion on the floor.
Is anybody here to speak today?
Yes, the Mayor's Growth Boundary Committee.
Yes, I'll do my best answering the questions.
I have a question, this is the last statement.
Um, yes, this is the last statement. Yes, I believe all the municipalities have gotten back, and so...
Yeah, you have about a hundred and twenty days, uh, for all the municipalities, all the government agencies to respond, but I think it still has to be...
If you're gonna speak, you need to come to the microphone and explain, sir.
My apologies. Uh, the next step is for it to be certified by the local planning commission, but approval from the, all entities from the county to the local, uh, cities is required before that happens.
So, I don't start sending them to Danridge tomorrow. The reason why we have it tonight would be in that growth area.
That I'm not sure.
Somebody comes in tomorrow, wants to do some in that area, do I send them to Danridge?
No, not yet.
That's what I'm not yet.
Yeah, not yet, no, not yet.
You let me know when.
Yes.
If I'm not, I'll call that time.
Yes, yeah.
That's all I'm gonna do later.
Yes, yeah.
Ms. Janet?
Um, many citizens have asked us to come up with another way to create some revenue, and, um, I think this is an excellent idea. Um, having a husband who's worked in water and wastewater for thirty-three years, we go down the interstate and the exit would be completely dead, is it no sewer there? Go down the next exit, you know, so we can't get the sewer out to the additional exits and build growth at the exits where business should be. And we don't want it in near our homes and our subdivisions, et cetera. So if we can get it out near the interstates, that's twofold. One, it brings in revenue to our county, and two, those people get off, they spend their money, and they leave. They don't use our roads, they don't use our schools, I mean, this is good money, good revenue coming in, and I think this is a wonderful move if we're able to, uh, move the boundary out, get the sewer out there, and, and bring a new form of revenue in here instead of property taxes.
Katie?
Okay, well, based off Janet's comment, wouldn't this be revenue for the city, if the city annexes it? Or does the county get a portion of the tax?
Correct, the county would receive their portion of sales tax, and then the city receives their portion as well.
Forever, or does it last so many years?
No, can't, well, for, for every, I mean, it would fall just like all, all the rest of the sales tax operates.
And then, like, as far as Tim's question, whether it goes to Danridge or the county, doesn't the property owner have to request to be zoned in the city?
So, annexation only occurs at the property owner's request, correct?
Right, so it would still go before the county, right, until it's annexed from the city?
No, it's not, it's, it's birth boundary.
No, but I'm saying, all right, say it's approved, I own property down Deep Springs, and I wanna build something. It's not annexed by the city, so do I still go before the county planning?
Yes.
Until it's annexed?
Until it changes, they go, it goes in front of Danridge Regional Planning Commission, not ours. Until it goes to the city, then it go in front of the city council or the city planning. But there's regional in Jeff City, Danridge, and whatnot, that would follow under their regional planning.
Okay, so it doesn't go to the county commission at all? For all of Deep Springs, down to one thirty-nine, it will now, if this passes, if anybody wants to do anything, it'll go before Danridge Regional and not the county?
It'll go to regional planning commission. What, yeah, once it's annexed, yes.
So if that happens, and you have design review standards for Danridge, and it's a commercial entity, building being built, does it fall under your new design review?
Well, we don't have those standards in place yet. Uh, we're actually meeting about that tomorrow night. But, um, the designer view committee would be only for town limit, inside the corporate limits of the town. And it, once, once a property was annexed in, yes, it would fall under those standards if, if they were to pass.
They have managed to...
So for business, okay, let's say business comes into the Deep Springs exit, you run the sewer line, they get annexed 'cause they're gonna have to pay for the sewer, then they fall under your design review standards?
Yes.
And everybody else, whatever area, yeah, okay.
Annexation's the key.
Okay, well, that wasn't why I'm, that wasn't why I pressed my button to speak. The reason why I pressed it was I wanted to ask the mayor, because I was told they were readdressing maybe urban growth boundaries at the state level. Has anything changed, is there any anticipation of a change? That was why I wanted to ask.
Only thing has changed is anticipation of change.
Okay, thank you.
I, I mean, this, this is true.
All in all done, we will proceed to vote. We have sixteen yes, zero no, one extension, passes. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one, resolutions to levy a mineral tax on all sand, gravel, sandstone, chert, and limestone severed from the ground in Jefferson County, Tennessee. Rob Levins, is Mr. Blevins want to join the meeting? We have a motion to accept, Mr. Brooks, we have a second, wait a minute, wait a minute, we got Austin Brooks and Janet Norton is the second, and we have Austin Brooks to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call County Attorney Doug Drennan to the podium, please.
Sure, Mr. Doug.
You did write this resolution, right?
Yeah.
Okay, could you give a brief overview of the revenues that could come off of this?
It is only, it is limited only to those minerals. So the mineral, the minerals that you see here are the only minerals that can be taxed, having to do with it to be severed. I understand that the, the mechanics, uh, that tax is paid to the state, and the state writes the check back to the county. As far as those minerals that are extracted, at fifteen, I think it's fifteen cents, um...
Fifteen cents per ton?
Correct.
Okay, so the state would handle collection?
That's, I understand it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Drennan.
Okay, well, I've tried to research this, but I couldn't get very far with it. But, um, so I contacted CTAAS, and they asked the CTAAS lawyer some questions for me. Uh, my understanding is that agricultural lime, limestone is exempt from the tax. And according to the CTAAS attorney, he thinks the tax applies to where it is removed unless it is sold for use outside the state. So my questions have to do with, um, well, I think in about two thousand and fifteen, we voted on this, and I voted no, and the best of my memory is that it wouldn't generate much revenue based on the exemptions in the state statute. So I don't know what the projections of that revenue might be, say like for Jefferson City mines, what percentage is ag usage of the limestone, what percentage is sold in another state? However, we have somebody harvesting rock also in our community, but I'm really not a hundred percent sure, does it apply to them? Because the CTAAS attorney thinks that if it is where it's removed, because that's being sold in another county, but I wanna know yes or no for sure. So also, my questions include, will a tax impact current employment? Well, I'm not sure, because I don't know, I haven't gotten to do my due diligence. Is it a viable tax, or is it just a problematic tax with tracking with low revenue generations? Well, I'm not sure, I know for a fact twenty-six counties in the state do not have a mineral tax. I know in the past, I voted no, but I would like more time to research and do my due diligence to determine if I want to support the tax or not this time, and it requires a two-thirds vote. So I am motioning to postpone this to our next quarterly meeting, which is that the correct term, parliamentarian, and it overrides the motion on the table. So I am motioning to postpone until next month, so I can research and hopefully get some more answers. So my decision, I feel more confident with it.
We have a motion on the floor to postpone, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second on the floor. Okay, Mr. Reed?
Uh, I would just like the slide that was up there just a minute ago that showed figures, uh, the estimated taxes that we may get, and we've listened from citizens tonight. I've listened to commissioners and say that we need some additional revenue. We need to look at what we got, if we get two hundred, if we get two hundred thousand a quarter, that's eight hundred thousand a year. That's going up there toward the wheel tax, I think we need to look at that, and we need to make a decision on this. And every other county around us does this, except for Sevier County.
All right, Mr. Marcus, just hang on with me here for just a second. We have a higher rated motion on the floor to postpone, in a second, we will vote on the postponement. We have eleven yes to postpone, six no's. Will you vote it to postpone?
Until the next quarterly meeting?
Till the next quarterly meeting, that would be in January. Next resolution is resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three, surplus resolution, Danridge Library. Seventeen yes, zero no's. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash three four, surplus resolution, Jefferson City Library. Next, we have Resolution 2024 dash three-four, Surplus Resolution, Jefferson City Library. Question or comment? Not hearing any, proceed to vote. Seventeen, zero. Next, we have ad hoc committee, Terry Dockery. I believe Mr. Brooks was going to speak on his behalf.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like Doug Ebbst to speak on my behalf if he would be so kind.
Mr. Ebbst, would you explain the committee?
Mr. Chairman, I think the protocol would be for Dr. Arnold to speak to this since he's the school board chairman. If he wants to cede that to me, that's fine.
Sure.
Who does Dr. Arnold want to speak for him?
Unfortunately, I don't have anybody else to turn to, so be happy to speak on this. So the school board requested that a group form to be able to come together quarterly and discuss items that are of mutual interest, answer questions, deliver information that, it's not a voting session, just a, a group that gathers to share information and mutual interest within committees. I put some information in a packet that just discussed it a little bit. The board has three members, the school board has three members. I would be on there as a informational piece. The request from the board is for the commission to have three members along with the mayor for informational piece. Any questions there?
Question or comment? Mr. Reed?
Dr. Arnold, we have several things I'd like to say to you. I've been following a lot of things going on within the school department and I sincerely appreciate all the effort that you've put in there too, working together as a position in school. I appreciate the support that you have given to several, to capacity partners and my favorites. And I look forward to our conversation going one more week with you and really spending time with you. I appreciate you very much, Dr. Arnold, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Question or comment? Who on the county commission is interested in being on this committee? I have one, two, three, four, five, six. I got Randy, there's six. Okay, we got, we got three heads up and they're asking, we got six. What's the pleasure of the commission? How do you want to do it?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
If, if, could we do this now, go ahead and nominate? Or do we need to approve the committee and then send it to nominating?
The committee just has no voting power, so there's nothing to approve on the committee. We're just sending three members. You just need to pick three members.
Paul said send all six and he'll make seven. Did I mishear that? John Neal's eight, alright. I believe Marcus Heady and Jim Snodgrass.
Marcus Reed was one, Janet Norton was the other one?
Jim Snodgrass, I'll move that.
Is that what everybody wants to do? Originally, I was asked the chairman or whoever was chairman to be on it, but I'll relinquish that position because I'll probably show up anyway.
We all have the right to show up and be a part of it, so.
Everybody can show up and be a part of it. My biggest question to it was who was going to run the meeting? Was it going to be ran by the school board? In the joint commission, Doug, would you come to the podium? Me and Doug, we discussed this in great length.
Sure, yeah, the whole, the whole idea of this is to kind of move forward, to put the past behind us, you know, to all roll in the same direction, to have virtually all the school board members, if they want to be there, all the county commissioners, if they want to be there. The whole reason we have three people is so that in case, you know, there's a meeting date, there are six, six people who have committed to be to a meeting. But they have no more rights or responsibilities or authority than anybody, any other school board member or county commission member. We are asking, you know, Dr. Arnold and Mayor Potts to be there as resource people. And as I said, the, the whole idea is to make it as equal as possible. So on the, like the first and the third quarter, for example, the school board would host a meeting and the chairman of the school board, who is a member of the committee, would run it. On the second and fourth, the county commission would host it. The chairman of the county commission, who hopefully will be on the committee, would run it. You know, before it actually, we have our first meeting, the two chairman would get together. They decide how this is going to work. You know, they're going to be chairing the meeting, so they should, you know, have the say in how it's going to be run. Pretty much, we, we looked for the, for the chairman to be more of a discussion leader. To, you know, to keep track of who wants to talk, make sure things are in line. We hope there's no, this is not a debating society. It's sharing information with you so you know where we're coming from, what we have coming up in the future, and, and vice versa, where you're at. And we know what you have available, you know, just to discuss things of mutual, mutual assistance. So I would say, as far as who's going to run the meeting, first and third school board, second and fourth committee, county commission. And it would be up to the chairman to get together before the first meeting and decide what the structure of the meeting is going to be.
Who will advertise the meetings and do the structure?
On the, on the, the school board?
Because see, you're going to have members that are elected officials. So when you get, when you get three together.
Oh, I understand that, yeah, I understand. I would say with the school board would, you know, again, the county, the chairman, I think could come up with an agreed procedure for that. Whatever you come up with, that's how we'll operate. Any other questions?
Any questions?
Thanks.
Mr. Scarlett?
Based on what Doug said and how he said the structure, I would, I would think that the chairman of the commission, so they can communicate with the chairman of the school board, needs to be on there. I mean, I don't care how you appoint him, I just think that that's, parliamentarily, that's a, that's a lot easier thing.
I would agree, I would agree, and I don't know what handout you got, but on the handout, it does have that the chairman and two school board members, the chairman of the county commission and two commission members would be, would make up it in addition to the Mayor Potts and Dr. Arnold. I agree.
Okay. You're going to show up anyway? You got your word in?
Mr. Chairman, since I had the motion, if, if Mr. Douglas, who seconded my motion, is agreeable, we'll put county commission chairman, if agreeable with you, sir, Mr. Snodgrass and Ms. Norton.
Is everybody in agreement?
It's really.
It's a done deal?
Okay.
Takes eleven votes to change it now. Go ahead.
I was going to recommend Heady because I know our hot topic in the schools is the Jefferson Elementary and she's been heavily involved and represents that district. So I, I think Heady should be involved as well.
Everyone's involved.
Everyone, right.
Yeah.
On the committee.
I think we're overcomplicating this, Mr. Chairman.
I think so too. Let's get this cleared up. Anyone of this body in the school board can attend any of these meetings and you can have input. There'll be no voting, so therefore, this is like a community top chest, is what it is. It's a roundtable. Call it a roundtable. And I think we're trying to keep this real, real simple, but it's getting real complicated. But anybody that wishes to show up can show up, public, private. But it'll be an elected official show and they'll, they'll take questions and comments out of the audience, I'm sure. I'm sure they'll make it fair to everybody. All we got to do is decide.
I'm ready to vote, Mr. Chairman.
I thought you had already voted.
Don't have to, we done decided.
Oh.
Ms. Katie objected, now you've got to vote.
Okay. So it would be myself as chairman.
Mr. Snodgrass and Ms. Norton.
Mr. Snodgrass and Ms. Jenkin.
Yes.
Or Ms. Heady.
Or Ms. Heady.
So you'd take the recommendation of the motion or you take the, the amendment?
Everybody else will do it.
You're going to vote.
I've got a motion and a second. You, as long as Mr. Douglas agrees.
If you, if she's going to nominate her, she can do it afterwards.
Sure.
She did have a motion with the finance.
Well, but again, every, everyone's welcome. I bet the chairman will even provide dinner at these meetings.
Everybody like like dogs?
Well, that's another conversation.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch you.
I'm still on the chart up there, so can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
So why can't we just vote for three out of the four like we do with other things?
Because that's not the motion you've got on the floor.
The motion on the floor has done big.
Okay.
You can amend that motion after it's made.
No, you amend the motion before it's made. So I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Yeah, hit your button. Push your button.
It's going to work.
Is your motion for all the commissioners to give three names?
Yes, that's my amendment. Yeah, two names with you on there by default.
We got half a second, who's the second? Okay. Your amendment is Katie.
My amendment is to vote for two of the three commissioners that are not, that does not include Jimmy Carmichael as the chair because you're automatically on the committee. So it would either be Janet Norton, Heady Thomas, or was Jim Bo, Jim Snodgrass the third one? Who was the third one? Jim Snodgrass, that's my amendment.
Fire away.
So we vote. Wait another second.
Second.
Just take my name out of it and send Heady and I'll, I'll still show up. Share my twenty-two years of education.
You got to give us the promise sign, you got to have the peace sign and promise. Problem solved. Jim Snargus, Heady Thomas, and myself. We will vote.
So where are we voting on?
Ms. Jenkin backed out, so they automatically.
What you wanted to do?
The vote is actually amended. But if she backed out, you don't need to amend it now. You can go back to just pointing. You don't even have to vote, really. It's done been agreed upon.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I would amend this. You would leave it as a chairman's appoint, elected chairman appointed and get this over with.
Show hands that wants the chairman to appoint.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Keep them up. I think that's about everybody, but one. So Austin, are you up or down or where you at?
Wherever it takes you.
Yeah.
Mr. Parham, chairman, so are we not voting on the amendment here?
It's been a race, it's done been took out, drawn.
She's never withdrawn.
Withdraw it.
Okay, it's withdrawn.
It's easy now, but it's difficult when you write it out.
Yep. The motion is that the chairman chooses. Proceed to vote.
What time's the mercy rule, ten thirty?
Yes.
What? They can't go past ten thirty? I think it's ten thirty. No, it's in the road. That's more than two business after ten thirty.
You do two and it won't vote? It won't let you? I think we got max, yes, there's our computers. Must be something about nine thirty. Any no's? Any no's? There's no no's, so there has to be seventeen yeses. There's a majority. Passes, seventeen to zero. I pick Jim Snargus, Heady Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Parham, chairman, that was an amendment. Do we need to vote on the original motion?
We got to vote on the original.
You can't withdraw it.
No, you can't withdraw it, it's done been amended. Yep, we got to vote on it. It's going to take an hour to figure this out tomorrow.
They just can tell that our board has been with my resolution. Perjury.
Besides yours work and Marcus, Marcus.
Voluntary lobbyist. Besides a bunch of lobbyists everywhere in the country.
Better vote yes or she'll vote herself out.
I'll deal with the southern and whatever you got.
Your original motion?
Your original motion.
That was amended to allow him to appoint.
Right. Fifteen yes, one no, one abstain. Let's move on to lobby expense. David Seal, Tennessee Property Rights Protection Act, up to thirty-five hundred dollars. Ronnie Colvin.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, on the resolution that you have in consultation with the county attorney, Exhibit A needs to be removed. Where it says in the Resolution Tennessee Property Rights Protection Act, that's all we need. After that, it says herein referred to as the act, a copy of which is attached here to as Exhibit A. That, that just needs to be removed because there is no Exhibit A.
There is no Exhibit A. And Mr. Seal has some things to address about the resolution. Sure. Mr. Seal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really feel privileged.
Been a long night.
I'll be happy to answer questions from your board, but there's two things that need to be in that contract. The word volunteer needs to precede the word lobbyist in each of the sentences where it is written. And the word mileage needs to be added under the compensation.
Alrighty, Mr. Drennan, could you please join us?
Yes.
Did you catch what he just said?
I did, that's fine. I just need, I, I can draft that, I just change that agreement if that's okay with everybody. We needed that agreement for purposes of finance.
Alright, any question or comment for either one? I would think so. We need to prove agreement first. Yes, we would. So you will be voting on the agreement? As amended. As an amendment. I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay, this is on me, because I missed the work session, so, and I didn't happen to notice this in my packet when I was looking at. Is this for something new, or is this what you've already done for us? Is this a new task, or is this for what you, we've already asked you to do, and you've done for the?
No, this is a brand-new bill that is called the Tennessee Property Rights Protection Act, that will amend about five different sections of Tennessee code, that will change the practice of eminent domain against citizens in the state.
Okay, so.
Would you, do you have a question about what the bill does?
Well, I guess I would, like I said, I missed the work session, so I didn't hear, I'm sure you probably came and spoke.
I did.
And, so I missed it, and then I'm.
I'm happy to summarize.
Could you please, for me?
As I said at the work session, there's one piece of eminent domain law that needs to be fixed in the state of Tennessee to protect citizens from property being taken by government and turned over to private development. And there's, there's five things, Commissioner Huffaker. The bill will redefine blighted properties to a more narrow standard. Right now, your property on the lake and my property over in Chestnut Grove can be blighted, and it can be taken with eminent domain in a blighted area, no matter how good the property is. Number two, we're going to eliminate the area definition of blight, which means that a housing authority can no longer take a huge tract of properties, with one or two of them being blighted and condemn the whole and the aggregate. Number three, it will give property owners a reasonable time to correct any deficiencies in their property before it is considered by eminent domain. And then four, it will authorize housing authorities to offer property owners a higher price for their property above market value. Right now, under Act 863 that was passed in two thousand and six, there is a requirement that eminent domain be based on two valid appraisals by certified appraisers. We're going to be able to offer property owners more money than that appraisal if this passes. And number five, it would not do anything to prevent legitimate takings for things like schools and infrastructures and post offices and jails and county office buildings or anything else. And it also does not interfere with the county or city or municipality's ability to condemn property that is blighted, that falls under the actual blight definition. So, assuming the legislature agrees with all of that, that's what the bill does.
Okay, thank you.
Anywhere. We will proceed to vote. We have sixteen yeses, one no. Passes. Next, we have twenty-twenty-four Home Program. Oh, I'm sorry, we got to do the fun. Sorry about that, jumped the gun. Question or comment? Not hearing any, we'll proceed to vote. Thumbs up. Sixteen yes, one no. Passes. Home Program homeowners rehab program policies in procedure? Straight-up deal? Question or comment? Not hearing any, we'll proceed to vote. Passes, seventeen to zero. Next, we have the interlocal agreement for emergency aid and emergency jail resources by and between Cock County, Tennessee, Cock County Sheriff's Department, and Jefferson County, Tennessee, and Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. This is an agreement that Mr. Doug Greenen has worked on, that is an agreement for Cock County to use our annex jail. Does everyone understand what we're talking about? Question or comment? Not hearing any, proceed to vote. Passes seventeen to zero. Or, we have Kevin Poe, Public Safety Memorial Project. Is Kevin here?
Kevin's not, but I spoke with him, trying to find out, and he's wanting to do a, what's it, a memorial project for safety officers. Ronnie, I suggest he contact you, because you work on the fallen officers. I don't know whether you, did you all have a chance? He, he was asking for the ability to get a rendition, or, he wanted to get the information to see how much it would cost to do it, is, is what he explained to me. He, he didn't mention any cost, but he wanted to get some, either architect or landscaping, or, he wanted permission to go get those numbers and bring it back to do this project. I, that's, Ronnie, you, I don't know if you talked, you may know more about it.
Just briefly, he was wanting to include fire and police together, and he wasn't aware of the ongoing deal to put the monument for fallen officers. So, with his agreement, it was to be added together, and he's just trying to get numbers at this time.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner Coleman was already working with FOP, they've already raised some funds, it was a fallen officer memorial. From my understanding, this is going to be a public safety memorial, we need these components, and they will be, they'll work together going forward, and the two are not aware of the situation.
Okay, so we don't need to do any?
We don't need to take any action?
My understanding, no at this time. Is that, that correct?
Do we just need to give an affirmative that this body would like him to proceed? Okay, well, as long as Mr. Reed agrees, I move to have Mr. Poe proceed with this, getting numbers for this project.
Proceed. Ms. Heady, you wish to vote? Seventeen yes, zero no. There is no announcements, so. Sure.
The reason why Jimmy Patterson wasn't here tonight, I don't know if any of y'all know it, his sister passed away yesterday, or what? Saturday, yes. So, we need to keep Jimmy Deling, our thoughts and prayers in the family also.
I was just going to update, too. A lot of y'all voted to help me out, get some money together to try to pay the parking lot at the Senior Center in Straw Plains. It turned into being a lot bigger job than what I expected, but I got a bunch of people to help donate, and they're supposed to do it on the thirtieth and thirty-first of this month, so I just wanted to thank you all.
Anybody else? The motion?